Now declared this meeting open. Manoisa City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and we pay respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We'd also like to extend that respects to any First Nation people who are attending here today. Please note that this ordinary meeting of Manoisa City Council may be livestreamed and is livestreamed and recorded within the council's recording of council meeting policy. As a visitor in this public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd now like to invite the deputy mayor to provide us with a prayer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lord, let the light of your divine wisdom direct our deliberations and decisions and shine forth in all the proceedings and acts of Manoisa City Council. May we seek to preserve peace and harmony, promote the wellbeing in our city and continue to bring blessings of good government in this area of our responsibility. Lord, grant this prayer to us who work for the common good through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. And that takes us now to apologies and leave of absence. And I do have an apology from councillor Paul Stretton. Would someone like to move the motion that council accepts and notes the apology of Paul Stretton?
Move, Barwick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And seconded by councillor Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried. I'd now like to invite, um, public participat- is it public participation? Sorry, I'd now like to, um, do we do the conflicts before the public participation or after? Oh, we'll do public participation. Is there anyone here who would like to participate? Okay, so that's no. All right, I now invite councillors to make any declarations with regard- Okay, so what's the invite councillors to make declarations bit? Oh, okay, it's just under, I've got it under. No, 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 all good. Ah, okay. No worries. Okay, that's where, sorry. Okay, so that now takes us to, um, the next part. So, um, would anyone, so item five, the confirmation of the previous minutes meetings. So, item 5.1, which is the minutes of ordinary meeting held on the 27th of April 2022. The officer's recommendation is that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 27th of April 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted. Would someone like to move that, um, recommendation? Motion.
Time moved.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to second that? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any comments on this one? All those in favour? Next one is the, um, minutes of Lake Mendara Advisory Committee held on the 17th of March 2022, which is item 5.2. Would anyone like to move that officer's recommendation?
I would, through the chair, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I would move that the minutes of the Lake Mendara Advisory Committee held on the 17th of March 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted. Uh, the, uh, LMAC, uh, LMAC, C01 slash 03 slash 22. Uh, the, uh, that Mr Guy Mears be appointed as chair for the Lake Mendara Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Can I, um, get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. The, uh, the first meeting of the Lake Mendara Advisory Committee, uh, was held on the 17th of March 2022. Committee members nominated Mr Guy Mears for the position of chair. The chair of the advisory committees are appointed by council as per the advisory, uh, committee terms of reference.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Uh, item six, actions from previous council meeting, nil. Item seven, which is declarations of conflict of interest for councillors now.
Through the chair. Um, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest in item 11.7, which is the concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges and reserve lease trustee permit fees for 36 identified nonprofit sporting clubs and community organisations as defined in council's revenue statement for the 2022, 2023 and 23 to 24 financial period. Um, I'm the president of the Manoisa Touch Association. And I will be leaving the room.
Thank you. Um, I have a, also have a conflict of interest with, um, item 11.7. Um, I believe it's a declarable, um, conflict. And I am choosing to stay in the room, um, because I'm on the board of the Irish Club and the Irish Club Oval is one of the listed items. But the Irish Club Oval actually doesn't pay rates and it doesn't pay, and they actually don't use town water. And I think the only thing they actually do pay for is the connection to use a water meter. Does anyone else have a conflict?
Yeah, sorry, it's through the chair. What about the accommodation?
That's not part of it.
Yeah, well, they pay sewage and that rate.
No, this is the Oval.
Yeah, but what about the accommodation as part of the Irish Club?
No, no, this is the Irish Club Oval.
Is this for the sporting facility?
Oh, sorry.
Yep, yeah, it's just for the Oval. And, and the Oval's on the mine lease, that's why they don't pay rates. Um, the only one I would say is we've got some conflicts of interest with the confidential, which is, uh, confidential, um, consideration of confidential business. And I'm, I'm, I believe that we may have two councillors and a staff member who have confidentiality warm with this one.
Madam Mayor, I think it would be useful to follow the process. So at this point in time, you've indicated you've got to defer the process, which means you've got to go back to the councils to see if you're staying in the room or leaving the room. You haven't indicated which one.
Oh, so I can't just nominate to stay in the room?
Normally you ask the rest of the councillors.
Okay. All right, um, what, is it as a motion?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to put the motion forward that I be able to stay in the room for item 11.7. Um, the waiving the fees, given that my conflict is I'm on the Irish Club Board and the, the nominated sport is the Irish Club Oval and it actually doesn't pay rates to Manoisa City Council and they don't use Manoisa City Council water.
I'll second. I'll move, sorry.
Madam Mayor, you'll move?
Yep, I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Sorry, uh, I've got, uh, through the chair, I've got a conflict of interest for 11.7, um, for being a past president and now a committee member of the Manoisa Race Club. And I will be leaving the room.
Does anyone else have a conflict last?
Um, yes, I will declare a conflict in, I'm just trying to find the number of it down the bottom. My machine won't go that far. I think it's 14.3. Is that the discussion?
Yes, yep.
Yes, I'll declare a conflict for 14.3 and I'll be leaving the room.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I've already completed a conflict of interest form and will be leaving the room in relation to 14.3.
And I believe we've got one more councillor that may have a conflict with 14.3. Deputy Mayor, do you have a conflict with 14.3?
Um, I hadn't considered that I did, Madam Mayor, um, in relation to that.
Do you have a conflict with 14.3, Madam Mayor?
I certainly don't.
I'd probably dispute that.
That's fine.
Can we put that on the record, please?
Madam Mayor, could I ask you the details of, um, why you consider I have a conflict of interest?
Just with the, the party involved, they've put a complaint against yourself and also another councillor and also a-
I was unaware of this.
And also, uh-
Am I hearing about a complaint now?
No, no, not to council, to a, to, um, um, an organisation on part of. And I believe maybe some of the discussion will actually incorporate that in it, in the, um, in, in this 14.3, so.
Through the chair, can you be more forthcoming with where my complaint's coming from?
I can be, but it, 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 it won't be confidential then. But it's, I can, I definitely am happy to, um, so staff member got, um, confidential information that, I'm not sure how they got, got the information and they passed it on to, to councillors who passed it on to a, um, third party who was involved in the, um, confidential information and then they put a complaint in about that confidential information being passed on. So-
Oh, well, that complaint would be incorrect and doesn't apply to me, so I'm happy to stay in the room. So, you know, I didn't know about the complaint to start with. Because that was never the case, I wasn't involved in that.
Sorry, can I recommend you discuss this in confidential? And if a conflict of interest arises within confidential, declare it.
Yeah, oh, look-
I'd be happy with that, I'd not worry of any conflict.
And also, I believe there's some friendships with the party as well, so it's, it's, it's a bit cloudy.
Correct.
Very cloudy.
No, I agree, it's very cloudy and I'm not sure why it's been brought up for a discussion in a council meeting when it could have been discussed in a workshop, but I'm happy to do that. Okay, so we're going to speak about that in confidential.
Already declared the conflict, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I know you have. Councillor Fortune, um, Deputy Mayor, you don't want to declare a conflict on this?
I'm not aware of any conflict.
So you don't have a friendship with the, the, the third party?
Well, as the CEO has indicated, we can discuss that, um, in confidential and if, um, I realise then that there might be a conflict, I'm certainly happy to declare it then.
Okay, all right, that's, that's fine, thank you. So that takes us to now. Do we have a quorum now for item 11.7? We don't? Okay, so do we need to move a motion for that one?
Through you, Madam Mayor, uh, that would be appreciated if we could move a motion, um, that the council defer the report until a quorum can be gained, either at the next special meeting or the next ordinary meeting.
Okay. All right, um, would like, someone like to move the motion that due to a lack of a quorum for item 11.7, concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges and reserve lease trustee permit fees for 36 identified nonprofit sporting clubs and community organisations as identi- as defined in council's revenue statement for 22, 23 and 23, 24 financial period will be deferred to a later meeting. Can someone, um, move that motion, please?
I'll move.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Can, um, can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Through the chair. Can councillor Coglan still move that even though she's got a conflict of interest?
Because I'm just moving it to get off the agenda. That's all right, isn't it?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, that's correct. We're simply moving it on. It says in the act, it can actually be moved.
Um, okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item eight, which is the merrill minute, which is none. And then go to item nine, which is reading and consideration of correspondence, which is item 9.1. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation for the correspondence report for April 2022?
Move.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you, councillor, Deputy Mayor. Um, would anyone like to, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Councillor Tully moved this.
Oh, sorry, sorry councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'd just like to commend CEO David, uh, David Keenan on the letter that he wrote to, um, Casella Wines, uh, Casella, uh, Casella Family Brand and regarding the wine and the, um, the sale of alcohol and the response from Casella Wines, um, was, was very encouraging and I thought that was a great outcome.
Uh, through the chair, yeah, I concur with councillor Tully on that, um, and had a note down here to, um, I thought it was a good initiative from the CEO and, um, it certainly has borne some fruit. It's one small step against, um, the issue with the, um, alcohol down in the, around the riverbed there. So, um, it's, uh, certainly good to see that. Um, and also, uh, the item there for the appointment of councillor McCrae to the Riversley World Heritage Advisory Committee, I'd just like to, um, congratulate her for being reappointed to that committee.
Yep, thank you, Deputy Mayor, well said. Um, with the Casella Wines, um, Mr Keenan, was that your initiative or did you work with, uh, um, the liquor court or the, um, another group?
Through you, Madam Mayor, you'll see that it is very much an operational letter. It was focused on staff from the organisation trying to clean up the river.
Yep, okay. And, and my only concern is that we seem to have replaced, you know, um, you know, rubbish with, um, wine bladders and boxes to glass now, which is sort of just swapping one problem for another, which, which I, I think it was a, you know, it was gr- it was really heartening that, um, Casella Wines actually said, hey, we want to help fix this and maybe we need to look at it at a bigger approach now because, um, things can be swapped out for something else and we're just, the problem just seems to change. So it is something we might have to look at, uh, as a, as a, as a councillors about what we want to do, how we want to try and address this.
I thought through the chair that the liquor court were the ones responsible for it, so they're the ones that should probably have a look at it again.
I agree, that's what, that's what I meant. We've, we've taken on ourselves and I think we're just, um, moving the problem to something else. And so if, if, um, even if it's with us or the liquor court or whoever takes it on, there needs to be a bigger picture approach to it.
Yeah, maybe all the organisations in town that get government funding should come on board and help with this situation as well. That would be a good start.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments on the, and congratulations councillor McCrae, great to hear see. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that brings us to the media communications overview report for March and April for 2022.
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the March and April 2022 media and communications overview report.
Thank you, councillor McCrae. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Fortune. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, yeah, I would, there's been a lot of media happening and, um, before I start, I'd just like to congratulate the team that put on the Greater Australian Bites on Saturday night. That was a really successful event. I was able to pop in, um, and leave Zonta a couple of times during the evening and there were, you know, a lot of, um, there was a big crowd and everyone seemed to be enjoying themselves. So well done to those people. Um, as far as the media goes, I've had a look and, um, Madam Mayor, you've been very busy with the media. I see you've got a lot listed here, um, for media releases and also Mob FM and ABC. But I'm just wondering, where is, um, the North West Star listed at all? Because I know you've done a lot of, um, North West Star media during the last month.
Uh, well, they'll probably go in the next one because I only met with them on Monday.
So that will be coming to the report?
It might, yeah, yeah, it was my two-year catch-up with the North West Star.
Oh, I was referring to some of the other articles. You did an article on May 3rd which said that all councillors voted to support the, um, pay rise. So I was just wanting a retraction, seeing that I was in bed with Covid that day. I wasn't actually present.
Um, I will definitely look at that, thank you councillor.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right, you, you started the meeting and then you jumped out. So you actually probably were on the, um, list of being present or did you?
Uh, no, just down in the minutes about the second thing listed, it said councillor McCrae, um, was asked to be absent. I was sick and I didn't have technology.
Ah, I, I just remember you being a part of it, but that's right, you did, you did jump out. That's right.
Also, um, while, while we're discussing media through the chair, are we able to discuss, um, whether we need to run reputational, like a reputational risk eye over some of the North West Star articles that you're putting up?
Well, I've done one interview with the North West Star and, uh, that was on Monday.
Not the North West Star I'm seeing. I'm just thinking, when, when we're discussing the budget-
Oh, are we talking about the LGAQ conference? Is that what we're talking about, that one?
No, we're talking about your media that you've been doing recently in the North West Star.
So that was one interview, but they've just broken it up into different segments.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
Righty-o.
Yep.
So will we be able to look at that, um, with reputational risk, um, under that lens? Because I'm just wondering, when we're, you know, sort of talking about that there's fat to trim on the budget, I'm just wondering what that fat might be.
Well, I'm happy to talk about that at the 5.30 meeting because that's probably the appropriate place to talk about the budget.
Yeah, well, it would be, but I, I think it, I get the feeling that the CEO's sort of being criticised. So we just need to consider reputational risk when we go out to the North West Star.
I think making allegations about what I've said and when I obviously didn't refer to any person.
But it is his job operationally to manage the budget and if there's fat lying around on the budget-
I was very clear, I was very clear that the councillors picked the rate rise and then the staff built the budget around that. So I was very clear, I didn't, no, there's no way you could think that any council staff member was responsible for that rate rise. It was on councillors, definitely.
Oh, sorry, through the chair, I thought, um, the council staff bought us options of what we wanted to see happening as far as services and service delivery and then we picked what rate rise we need to have to be able to afford that. Was that not the process we went through?
No, they, they did give us lots of options, but they did ask us what rate rise did you want?
In order to deliver the services that we want.
It-
So I'm just wondering what the, in the article-
No, no, no.
-that you're thirsty fat on the budget, what fat would you be, um, talking about?
Well, do you want to talk about the budget? This is not really the appropriate time right now, but I've got a, I've got a list. I've got a list so I can read, read it through at the budget. I don't know if you want me to start reading it through here when we're talking about media.
Well, just off the top of your head, you wrote a list, so do you remember what fat you're talking about?
Tell Strahill, we could get funding for that. We don't need to go and spend 550,000 of rate payers' money.
Oh, excellent, so if we can get funding, that would be great because then we can keep that money there and then we won't have to, um, maybe do a rate rise next time.
Councillor McCrae, let's leave this for the budget at 5.30 and I'm happy to go through it in great detail with you. But at the moment-
Excellent, I unfortunately have a conflict because I've got the opening of tourism tonight and that is my portfolio. I will try and get to both, I'll see what I can do, but thank you for clearing that up.
Ah, thank you.
Just through the chair, was there any talk of the eligibility of me being a councillor?
Well, we can talk about that as a councillor after this meeting if you like.
I'm happy to.
Well, it is P and D, it is, was in a newspaper article, so this seems to be the appropriate forum.
Councillor, um, I think I'm happy to talk to this offline. Um, I too would like to congratulate the, um, staff of Greater Australian Bites. I was there from four o'clock to pretty much the end and it was just a huge crowd from Manoisa. I got heaps of great feedback. Um, staff did a tremendous job and unfortunately we lost a few of the storeholders, but I still think everyone had a great time. The band, um, Two Jam Deadly were phenomenal. And, um, you really have to take your hat off to the library staff who got up there and did, uh, a Wiggles presentation and they had the kids dancing. Um, the, the, the parents were laughing, everyone was videoing and it was just a fantastic night. So, yep, really proud of how the staff put that on. And, uh, it should have been Australia Day, but it ended up being, um, in May and it was such a nice time of the year to actually host something outside. So hopefully we'll continue on.
Um, through the chair, can I also just make the point that you've gone out in the public in P and D, um, and, you know, criticised councillors, um, the organisation? And however, now we want to debate it in an open forum, you're closing it down. That just doesn't seem very transparent to me, to discuss it offline. You are quite online when you, when you, um-
Oh, no, I'm happy to discuss it. I'm happy to discuss it.
Go ahead councillor Tully.
Well, I'd just like to question what, uh, the statement that you made about my eligibility as a councillor and what, what circumstances don't I comply with?
I, I, I let the North West Star know that I have asked you to seek clarity with the state government whether you still are eligible to be a councillor in Manoisa City Council.
Yeah, and I asked you what part of the, the local government act don't I comply with? I've asked you several times in emails and yet to get a response.
Well, when I spoke to the state government, they said it's where your family live, it's where your kids go to school, it's where you pay your electricity bill. It's not always just where you, where you, um, are on the electoral roll.
So-
But I did ask you councillor-
Yep.
-to ring the state government-
I don't need to councillor Slade, because I comply totally with the, with the, uh, 2000 local government thing. If you feel that I don't-
Did you ring anybody?
Please report, no, I don't need to.
Okay, well, I believe you don't meet the-
What you believe and I believe are two totally different things.
And that's why I asked if you could just check-
I don't need to.
Okay, well, please don't raise your voice to me councillor.
Well, when people make acquisitions, um, accuse, accusations about me and destroy my integrity through town by saying that I don't comply with council, things will happen.
It's called defamation.
Things will happen.
Are you threatening me?
No, I'm not threatening you. I'm telling you, I've asked you several times-
Great, please don't raise your voice to me.
I've asked you several times to comply.
Please don't raise your voice, I can hear you perfectly.
I've asked you several times to ask what I don't comply with and you have failed three times.
Now, now you're not on live streaming councillor, just, just, just be normal tone and just use your microphone.
You're, you're, you're happy to go-
Just use your microphone, please. No, no one can hear you now, please use your microphone.
People can hear me.
No, they can't, you won't be on the live stream.
Yes, they can.
No, they can't.
Yeah, I'm done. All I'm saying is if, if you've got an accusation to make against me and you're happy to do it i- in the media-
No, I've, I've actually, I've actually emailed you and said, I don't, um, it has been raised many times in the public, so you may not be aware of it because sometimes people are the last to tell you, but it's been raised many times.
Correct, exactly, people generally are the last to tell me.
That's right, and, and it actually came up-
Not only in the public.
It actually came up in a couple of a councillor. Now, they, the, the, the sub, people are saying your family don't live here anymore. People are saying that you fly in, fly out. I asked you, I passed on that information to you and asked you if you could check with the state government or the LGAQ if you still qualify to be a councillor at Manoisa, that's all.
Okay councillor Slade, maybe I'll have the different local government regulations than you, but there's not one party that says that it's where your family live.
Well, this is when I talked to the state government, they actually said there's more to-
I'm not really concerned about who you spoke with. I've got the, the local government, 2009 local government regulations and not, and one part says that it's where your family lives. But if I'm wrong, I'm happy to be corrected.
Through the chair, Madam Mayor, maybe you can get some written advice around that from the state government?
I, I did get written advice from that, so I'll send it on.
Would you be able to pass that on, please?
Yeah, well, their advice was to contact the councillor and make your concerns clear, which I believe I did. And ask you to go and seek advice, which I did. And it's your choice not to seek advice.
Correct, and I haven't.
Yeah.
But I'd like, I'd, I'd like some respect from a leader to come and see me regarding it.
I did.
No, you didn't.
I did. And councillor, you often raise your voice to me, so why would I, it's easy to do things on email.
Yeah, okay, if that's the way you'd like to communicate, no, no problem councillor Slade.
Thank you, thank you councillor Tully.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, what part of the local government act don't I comply with? Now, if you're saying just because my family doesn't live here-
You need to live in the community that you're a councillor.
I do live, you're just, you've made the statement before that it's your family.
You, you have actually moved to Brisbane, that's what I believe, but I, I've actually said, I don't know.
Who has told you that?
Well, we've got mutual friends, haven't we? We've got a lot of mutual friends.
But who's, so what, I mean, that's, I live here, my role, I'm on the role here in Manoisa.
Councillor, I believe you're doing a good job as a councillor and I just don't know if you meet the requirements anymore-
Well, well-
-to be a councillor in Manoisa.
Okay, that's fine.
And that's all I've asked you to do is just check with the state government.
Well, that's fine, but be careful what you say because I do, will not have my names thrown around this town to say that I don't comply.
Well, I've said it to you and I've talked to the North West Star about my, and I was being transparent that I, I've-
So you did mention to the coun- uh, to the North West Star that I didn't comply?
No, I, I mentioned, I actually said, I have asked you to check if you still comply to be a councillor in Manoisa.
And that in your thoughts, I didn't comply were your words?
Well, at the moment, I, I, from what I heard from the state government-
Yeah, I'm finished, thank you.
-you don't comply, but that's what they've, they've sort of reiterated to me that if your family doesn't live here and you're paying a electricity bill-
Maybe you need to see where you get your information from then, because the local government are obviously telling you, uh, different to what the regulations are.
And that's why I asked you to get in contact with the state government so you could get clarity.
Once again, I don't need to because I, I, I'm following everything there, so.
Okay, well, thank you councillor Tully.
No problem, thank you.
Have I answered all the questions now?
Not really.
Madam Mayor, through the chair, um, I'd just like to pick up on something, um, in regard to that statement around the budget that was in the, um- that was in the, in the North West Star.
Yep.
So you attended all the budget meetings for six months with the councillors.
That's right, and.
We massaged the budget for many, many meetings over all that period of time. And you agreed with, as I understand it, can I finish please?
Yes, you said again.
As I understand it, you agreed with most of the capital items and also the expenditure throughout those meetings on, you know, on numerous occasions. And then at the 11th hour, you decide that you.
That's not correct, I, I've actually.
Hang on, I need to finish, please. At the 11th hour, you decide that you're going to vote against a budget that you've been developing and planning with the rest of the councillors for that period of time. I think that in that period of time, you could possibly have started to say that you needed to, councillors wanted to offer a zero rate increase, which is reckless, but.
I never said a zero rate increase, in fact, I was very clear that, and I said this to the North West Star, which it didn't get printed, is last year when we did a 3.75% rate rise, Mr Keenan's.
And zero before that.
And zero before that. Mr Keenan said that he was pretty confident we'd be 1.95 this year.
Yeah, but my point is, madam mayor.
No, no, I let you finish.
Well, I didn't finish, actually, I'm sorry, can I finish please?
No, no.
Can I finish what I wanted to?
You did finish.
I didn't, you jumped in.
Well, let me just answer that bit because I can't answer 10 questions and then remember them all. But what I will say is, I was very clear that I was, when we were picking projects, I wanted to know what the rate rise was going to be because that was the most important thing to me. And I would definitely say no to projects depending, and we were looking at everything we wanted to do without discussing a rate rise. So when we did discuss a rate rise and councillor Coglan put the 6% forward, there was no clarity around why she picked 6%, absolutely none. She just picked it and said it should be across the board. You didn't explain why, and if you want to explain why councillor, please do, but we could save this for the budget meeting this afternoon at 5.30, which would be more appropriate.
Well, look, why I said the 6% is I listened and looked at all the information that was put in front of me and I believe all the, all the services that we're doing and all the major projects that we've got going ahead are ones that the community need and want, and that's why I went to the 6%.
You don't think the transport hubs have been paid by ratepayers? We should go and get funding to get that, that done instead of paying, you know, ratepayers' money? That's an easy funding one.
Through the chair, those items.
But look, this is stuff we could be discussing at 5.30 when people are definitely coming in.
No, this is stuff that we should have been discussing at the budget meeting, which we did.
We were, we were.
That, you listen to me, that's why I put the 6% up. Now, I've listened to all the information, that, don't interrupt me.
Please lower your voice.
Oh, well, it doesn't seem to get through to you, so that's why I'm raising my voice. I listened to all our staff, what they put in front, I am not, and I'm, hands up, I'm not a business person. But I read through all those reports, I listened to all the, all the questions and answers in all our budget sessions and that's why I went with the 6%.
We had choices, we had choices to make some difficult decisions and keep the rate rise down. You didn't want to make them and that's fine, but I don't agree with it and at the time, it's six against one.
Well, it's a shame that the mayor doesn't support councillors.
Well, it's a shame that I wasn't invited into the conversation you had because I didn't see a conversation about the rate rise. I just saw people chuck, throwing numbers around with no, with no.
Read the reports, it's all in the reports, you just read them.
But we can take things out, we can go for funding, we are, we are funding out of ratepayers' money.
I'm not taking Telstra Hill out because I'm telling you every single week I get, you said that before.
No, I said funding, I didn't say take it out, I said let's look for funding and if it delays it, it delays it, but.
Well, let's delay it another two years before we get the funding and then some poor bastard will end up breaking their neck.
But can, you don't need to shout.
Through the chair, madam mayor, look, those, those items are generally, especially capital work. If I can finish please.
Yeah.
Those items are generally capital works and we do seek funding, so I can't quite see what your argument is about.
Can I just say that we're at 10.1, the media, no, no, I'm going to cut you off because we are talking about the budget and let's save this for when the community, if the community turn up this afternoon.
Well, it's not like it's been, the community's here, I don't have a problem with that.
We're talking about media and communication at the moment, so let's move on. And if you want to talk about budget, we'll be there at 5.30 and I'll stay as long as you like.
We're talking about the media and communication because of the damage that's being done to the council.
I'm allowed to give my view.
By yourself.
I'm being transparent.
When you're putting out articles that are really reckless, to be honest.
Look, sometimes it's not easy to hear criticism about yourself, I know that.
If I can just, you know, talk to the budget for a minute around that because.
Councillor, deputy mayor, no, I'm actually asking you.
You raised it in the media and I would like to correct some of the.
This is 10.1.
Yeah, I would like to correct some of the stuff that you're putting out in the media.
Well, let's do it in the state, let's do it in the budget.
That media statement is reckless, it's been put out by you and it doesn't do anything for the ratepayers when we go and do a zero rate.
The only thing I've said about you sir is that you have lost touch with the community, that's it.
Yeah, well, I disagree entirely with that and I'm sure the other.
That's like defamation to me.
Of course it is.
Well, councillor.
There are a number of councillors, councils in this, in this state that are in difficult circumstances because of this type of grandstanding that's being done, where you want to keep the rates down to zero.
Deputy mayor.
And we know, and we know.
Don't raise your voice to me.
I'm not raising my voice to you.
That's one, two, three, I don't need to be, I don't need any people to raise their voice to me.
Can you let me speak please? Can you let me speak without interrupting please?
No, but I've said to you, please, we're doing the budget meeting this afternoon, 5.30 and I'm.
We're doing the media at the moment and the media is reckless, what's going out in the media is reckless, I'm sorry.
It's honest and transparent, I don't believe it's reckless at all, it's my opinion.
There's no financial basis for what you're saying in that media, no financial basis at all.
There's no financial basis, we've got, we've got so much we can cut out.
We've got our administration that has to report to the QTC and.
Well, I'm the one who brought the QTC in to go through our budget.
We've got to do forecasts, the councils around here work out the budget for the year.
I'm happy to list off the items that we can seek funding for and I'll do it tonight at the budget.
Excuse me, but all of those items.
Then we can debate it in a proper manner.
All those items that you talk about are fun, are items that can be, funding can be sought for.
That's right, but at the moment they're in the budget.
And that's right, and it's being done, I don't see what you're talking about.
It's not been done, it's a draft budget and this is the time to have some great discussion.
That's why you should have brought it up at all the meetings before.
I did bring it up, I actually said the most important thing to me is what rate rise we have. And if you want to dismiss me, that's fine, but I won't vote for something you won't explain where you pulled the figure from.
Well, evidently you're not listening.
Well, I am listening councillor.
Nope, she isn't, and look, can I just, can I close off please?
Deputy mayor, please, I'm not going to let you close off, I'm going to move on and I don't need to be spoken to the way I'm being spoken to, it's not.
Excuse me, I'm just debating the item, you know, and councillor McCrae.
There's nothing wrong with the article.
Councillor Coglan raised.
Nothing wrong with it.
Look, can I just recommend if you, no, no, can I just recommend if you're unhappy, go to the OIA and report it?
No, no, I'm not, not like you, I sort my own mess out.
And I'm not going to be shouted at, I'm not having people raise their voices, it's, that's not why I signed up.
Well, when you defame me in the public saying that I'm out of touch with the community, with all the community work I do, with everything I'm involved in, that is defamation.
Councillor, that's not defamation and I don't like you making accusations, please.
You should get legal advice on that.
Through the chair, can you tell us how we're out of touch with the community?
A 6% rate rise. We're going through COVID, we're in post-COVID recovery, people are really hurting. You tell me what pensioner, where they're going to find another $94 or $100 for to pay their rates?
A $1.68 a week.
We've got pensioners now who are too scared to turn their tap on and water their lawns.
Sorry.
So, but anyway, I'm, I'm so happy to talk about this at the budget and let's do that. But I, I don't think this should be a free for all for everyone to take turns at having a go at me. I did say you're out of touch and I stand by that, but I'd like to move on, so if anyone has.
So you're happy to say stuff about us, but we cannot retaliate in any way, now that's not right.
What you're saying here, you disagree with me and you're welcome to disagree with me, but no, no, no.
I'll give you some advice, I think it would be appropriate to deal with the matter here and move on. I believe that tonight's meeting on the budget is about the community having input into the budget, not about the councillors having a debate about the budget, that's the draft budget that's been put forward for the community to give feedback on. Councillor, I would.
I can't hear you David, do you want to speak into the microphone?
I would suggest that the meeting tonight is the opportunity for the community to have input into the budget. There is another opportunity for the community to do that next week at Camerewell as well. It is not the venue to have the debate between the councillors there. Can I suggest we move on because this is not assisting with the reputation of the organisation?
Okay, so if there's no more comments, all those in favour. And that's carried. Okay, so the next one is 10.2, which is the ALGA 2022 National General Assembly for the 19th and the 22nd of June 2021. Would someone like to move the, oh, sorry, 22, I'm a bit rattled. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council is represented at the Australian Local Government Association, LGA, ALGA, the National General Assembly, NGA, to be held in Canberra from the 19th to the 22nd of June 2022 by, is that supposed to be councillor McCrae and deputy mayor? Oh, okay, so we, so do we, how do we put, so we're putting up a recommendation, but we haven't got the names there, so how do we do that?
Through you madam mayor, it's up to finding out if there are councillors interested in attending and if so, if they're endorsed by council.
Okay, so we, so we do that first?
I'll move a recommendation that councillors represented at the Australian Local Government Association, ALGA, the National General Assembly, NGA, to be held in Canberra from the 19th to the 22nd of June 2022 by councillor Phil Barwick and councillor Peter McCrae.
Thank you councillor Fortune, would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, I would, the ALGA conferences convened annually by the Australian Local Government Association, the National General Assembly of local government provides an opportunity for local government to engage directly with the federal government, to develop, develop national policy and to influence the future direction of councils in our communities. The theme for the 2022 NGA is Partners in Progress.
Thank you, would anyone else like to add any comments to this?
Through your chair, madam mayor, I'd just like to say I'm happy to accept that motion, but I wanted to just reiterate that the Australian Mining Cities Alliance will also be meeting in Canberra during that period and they do that because of the nature of ALGA, where those particular councils can meet. So I will be partaking in activity with AMCA during that period as well, which councils, which council are, I'm the representative for, for council as well, so I just wanted to outline that, thanks.
Thank you deputy mayor. There's no more comments, all those in favour. Councillor Coglan, councillor McCrae, yep, that's carried. Okay, so that takes us now to the local laws and we're missing councillor Streton, so would someone like to put forward the officer's recommendation for the local laws overview report for March and April for 2022?
I'll put forward that recommendation through the chair, that council receives and accepts the March 2022 and April 2022 local laws overview report as presented.
Thank you, can I get seconded for that motion?
Second Barwick.
Thank you councillor Barwick.
Let's give a bit of an operational overview there through the chair. The, the crews have been proactive with implemented to, oh, sorry. Council animal management facility will implement a volunteer program at the pound. The council is looking for volunteers to play with the cats and kittens and to exercise dogs waiting for adoption or being rescued. Local laws is currently organising two pet days, one at Camerewell in June 2022 and the other one at Beccan Park in July 2022. Council and Queensland Police seized 13 cats from a property in Mount Isa. There's a record number of cats being rescued and adopted during April, 62 in total and 48 in one rescue mission on the 29th of April 2022. Ongoing patrols, patrols of QPS to address illegal camping and tip out laws in Burke Street and Isa Street Bridge. No camping, no drinking and no littering signs have been erected along the Lycart River, riverbed.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour and that's carried. All right, so the next one is 11.2, which is the finance overview report for April 2022 and I'll hand you over to the deputy mayor.
Thank you madam mayor, I'll recommend that council receives and accepts the April 2022 financial overview report as presented.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, the deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, sure, thanks madam mayor. The figures are outlined there by the director of finance and corporate services and in the report, I'll just comment on a few things. The, there is a, a small drop in other revenue, it's, it's well down, but I believe we're waiting for the water board dividend to be received and that's due to happen this month in May, so it's not up in that report yet. So however, that should smooth out towards the end of the year. We are within reach of making the budget by June 30, so I'm quite happy with the way we're tracking at the moment. And I'm advised that we may actually have steered towards a small surplus, which would be, which would be quite a good, healthy result. Just with, in terms of the expenses, I'd note that there's a small difference there as well, but it's, again, it's well within hand, so we're tracking well as I said, so. Just wanted to make a note that there is outstanding rates at page 66 of 11 million, which is well down on last month, so the payments are coming through. That 11 million includes 3.5 million that are in serious arrears and, and they, there are steps being taken by council to sell up properties that are well, you know, they've accrued for a very, very long time on the rate, so that's underway at the moment. I note though that there has been an improvement in those long-term, long-term outstanding rates by about $300,000, so I'd just like to commend the director and the team for, you know, the work that's being done in trying to reduce that. So overall, we're in a, remain in a strong financial position. We have a cash result of around, sorry, free cash of around 65 billion, which, you know, puts us in a healthy position going forward. As has been mentioned today, we do have the draft budget session tonight, which is the final of the, the series for, for the, before we go to budget approval next month. The quarter three forecast is in progress, but I believe that's in a later agenda, so we can discuss that then. And I'll just mention that the next audit and risk management committee meeting is due to be held next week. Thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor.
Sorry, just through the chair, madam mayor, the rates arrears generally sits between eight and nine. So you say it's, it's 11 now, is that correct?
Yeah, the current balance at the end of April was 11, but the rates were issued during April.
Oh, okay.
Started, but I just wonder if the director's got a, to date, a figure.
I have to take that on notice, we haven't, we don't have the staffing in house at the moment due to COVID, so I'll take that on notice and get you the balance as of today.
Thank you, and CEO, could we, Mr Keenan, could we sort of have a look at, you know, at one point we used to have a discount if you paid your rates on time? So could we have a look at, you know, previous history to see if, if that, that carrot actually did help get that sort of, so we weren't in a position where we've got $11 million outstanding if everyone was paying their rates on time and, and, you know, obviously money in the bank is better for us, interest in the bank, rather than being outstanding for long periods of time. So is that, can we get a report to council to investigate that?
Sorry, through you madam mayor, we actually raised that with councillors as part of the, the budget preparation. We spoke about that during the 30 day or 60 day discount. It's probably a bit late to be doing it for the draft budget as it stands at the moment. Keeping in mind the majority of people who take up the discount rate are those people who are financially stable, not unstable, they're the ones who plan everything ahead to make sure they get the discount over that period of time. But that was raised as part of our budget discussions.
Now, that's great, so if you could just do a report for me, just to show the difference and I guess I haven't seen the clarity between, you know, the, you know, if 70 or 80% of the town are paying their rates on that discount date time against, you know, 80% of the town paying three months late, you know, that sort of figures would be great.
So if the discount comes through, the amount of revenue generated diminishes as well.
I get that, but also money in the bank.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that was explained though because he said. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that was explained, though, because he said generally the people that take advantage of the discount are the people that usually pay on time anyway.
Yep.
So then we have to put the rates up more to cover it, and people that can't afford it end up paying more?
Or we could actually look for some savings and actually give a discount?
Through the chair, I concur with councillor McCray. To me, it's a false economy, where we're increasing the rate so that we can allow for the discount for people that are willing to take up the discount. I don't believe it has much integrity around it, and I don't believe we should be doing it.
That's one way of doing it. Otherwise, we could look for a discount, you know, in the budget, and then offer it to people who can pay their rates on time. And of course, if people are paying a payment plan, they could be involved in that as well.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. Not on a discount rate through a payment plan. That's not the way it works.
I'd be interested in what other councils are doing. So thank you. All right, any other queries? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so the next one is eleven point three, which is Waste Management Overview Report for March and April for two thousand and twenty-two. Who wants to put that one forward?
Through the chair, I'll make the recommendation that council receives and accepts the March, two thousand and twenty-two and April, two thousand and twenty-two Waste Management Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Any comments on this one?
Thank you. Through the chair, the March and April, two thousand and twenty-two have been very productive at the Waste Management Facility. The facility has established several projects that will improve productivity, safety, and compliance across the entire operation. In mid-March, the Waste Management Facility was subject to a site inspection by the Department of Environment and Science, DES, the facility's main regulator. Encouraging feedback was received during the previous inspection. DES identified a number of potential breaches. However, this time, we're satisfied that no breaches were observed. This should be attributed to the uplift efforts by the staff at the Waste Management Facility. Groundwork has begun on other developments around the site, including establishment of a new water management system, which is intended to include two lined leak-shaped ponds of stormwater, drain and a contaminated water drain to manage large amounts of rain during the wet season. Officers are developing a design for operation of a new transfer station and completing a safe work analysis on that area.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Next, we have the eleven point four, which is a splashes overview report for April, two thousand and twenty-two. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to put that motion forward?
I'd like to put forward the recommendation that council receives and accepts the April, two thousand and twenty-two splashes overview report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
It's in the report.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Next is eleven point five, which is the environmental and biosecurity overview report for March and April for two thousand and twenty-two. Would someone like to move this motion, please?
Through the chair, I'll move that council receives and accepts the March, two thousand and twenty-two and April, two thousand and twenty-two environmental and biosecurity overview report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor McCray. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
I have nothing to speak to. Thank you.
No. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those...
Through the chair, Madam Mayor, yeah, I just note in there that there is... There appears to be a rodent problem, a large rodent problem, meaning rats in town. And that the officers are on to that. And I noticed through social media, there has been quite a number of reports around, you know, some food outlets that have been subject to this. So apparently, they're doing everything they can to eliminate the problem, so hopefully, that'll go away over a period of time. I don't know if there's any updates on that, Mr CEO.
I'm aware... Through you, Madam Mayor, I'm aware of the rodents, but I might hand over to the director who looks after rodents or rodent control.
Through the chair, the biosecurity team and the environmental health officers have been out through the CBD just to discover or to find out what exactly is going on. What they have picked up is that some of the waste disposal, the practices that are being followed by the businesses, there's an opportunity to improve that. So we're working with the businesses through an education programme just to review some of those practices. We're also looking into a consolidated effort, a combined effort with the businesses to treat this problem before it gets worse. But it's also worth mentioning that community members also need to get on top of their pest control and pest management. So just to encourage community members as well, if you can get in touch with your pest control suppliers, please reach out. Please also get in touch with our biosecurity officers and give some guidelines as to how you should be treating rodents and the actions that you should be taking to prevent this from getting worse. So we're still working through that with the businesses.
And thanks, Chilera. And I think... I know some people have actually not treated rats because they're terrified they're going to hurt their domestic animals. So they sort of feel like, oh, I'm a bit worried, I might hurt my dog or cat. So that would be, you know, great advice, just for everyone to reach out and even come to council and find out how they can tackle this problem in a safe way at home. Yep, thank you.
Through the chair, just... Could I ask the director, do the officers believe it's a widespread problem within the community or is it fairly isolated?
Well, at the moment, it is quite widespread. We've received a number of complaints from the community. But like Madam Mayor said, please just reach out to our officers for some advice. We can give you some advice and guide you through how to treat this problem. And we are working together with the food businesses. Most of them want to do the right thing. That's the feedback that we've received from the officers. So it's just a matter of stepping up our efforts. We also unfortunately seem to have another problem with cats as well, because there's lots of food. So again, to homeowners, your domestic cats, please look after them, because unfortunately, we have received complaints that community members are feeding the feral cats, and it's also encouraging the, you know, the issue. We work through that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Chilera. I really appreciate that. Okay, if there's no more comments on this one, all those in favour? And that's carried. Now, this takes us to item eleven point six, which is the proposal to rename the Extrada Entertainment Centre at Buchanan Park. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council approves changing the name of the Extrada Entertainment Centre to Mount Isa Mines Entertainment Centre.
Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan. Deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Thank you. So two thousand and five, Extrada contributed a lot of money to about a million dollars towards the building of the entertainment centre in Buchanan Park, and subsequently, it was named the Extrada Event Centre. However, Extrada, as we know, has been absorbed by Glencore in that... Since that period. And they've signed an agreement with Mount Isa City Council, and a further £250,000 has also been provided by Extrada... Ah, sorry, by Glencore towards the facility. So part of that condition was that the name was to be changed to Mount Isa Mine Centre. And this has been hanging around for a little while, so this is really just getting back on top of that agreement that we made at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? I think this is a no-brainer. All those in favour? And that's carried. So that takes us to eleven point seven, which we have now removed off the agenda. Then we are now at eleven point eight, which is the budget year ending on the thirtieth of June, two thousand and twenty-two, March Quarter Review. Can I get someone to move that motion?
Yeah, sure, Madam Mayor. So the recommendation from the officers is that council approves and grants a concession to waiver and write-off rates and charges and reserve lease trustee permit fees excluding water consumption charges.
Sorry, that's eleven point seven, deputy there. We're on to eleven point eight?
Oh.
Budget year ending...
We didn't have a...
Oh, that's right. We've dropped eleven point seven. Yeah, okay, my apologies, everyone. Okay, eleven point eight. I'm happy to move, Madam Mayor. The council receives and accepts the budget year ending thirtieth of June, two thousand and twenty-two, March Quarter Review as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. So this is a standard sort of a review at this time of the year. And you'll note that there is a small increase in the revenue by six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that has been recorded and allocated. But there's also a fairly similar figure in the expenses, where the expenses have increased by that amount as well. So I'd just pretty much hand this budget to the floor. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just think it's important that the... Everyone's aware that the Mount Isa Waterbed dividend has been reduced from five million to three point six. So I think, you know, everyone needs to know to that.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. That was in our forecasts.
Yep, so it was in the forecast?
It was in the forecast, so originally, we're trying to follow exactly what they're doing within the forecast. So that's not an actual, that's a forecast, but now it is an actual.
Okay.
That original one was five, because that was based on what we'd received last year, so that goes through. I would turn around and say that the staff are operating as leanly as we possibly can to try and maintain, as the director knows, an operating surplus. You would also be aware of councillors that we have not delivered an operating surplus for the last three years, which then means that we're on... It would be a good idea to be delivering an operational surplus. So there has been a complete freeze on staff, and we're doing a lot more with a lot less. Would that be fair, director?
Absolutely. So this is the final review for the budget, for the FY twenty-two budget. So when we start the budget process, there's a lot of assumptions that are made and forecasted. But all these quota review processes are just a way for us to test some of those forecasts, get more updated information as it comes to light. So we have revised the numbers based on the actual trend and confirmed figures. And you can see that from the last quarter, quarter two, the deficit has been pretty much eliminated, and we're looking at a modest surplus. We're working towards the twenty-three budget, and I encourage everybody to come to the briefing this afternoon and get the public involved in this process, because it's very important.
Thank you, Chilera. And I just want to clarify with the dividend, which was five point... Was it two, five point? So what happened was, the year before, they hadn't paid us, and they corrected it for that year. So that's why it was in the five millions, because we didn't get the right dividend the year before. So that's why it seemed like a lot, a huge amount. And now it's probably back to a norm... More on par with what it should be.
Through the chair, can I just take this opportunity to reiterate that there are a lot of councils struggling in Queensland, as recent reports from the audit office have indicated. I... You know, the amount of work that we do around our budget and around our finances, I think it helped us to remain strong. And we do need to make difficult decisions within budgets. And I think that it's important that we maintain that strength so that we can keep council very healthy financially.
Yeah, I think on that point, I would really like to congratulate Chilera and her team. The work they have done with the budget has been phenomenal, and they have put in a lot of time and effort. So we really appreciate all the work that goes into that with the staff. And I hope if you can pass that on to the staff, how much we appreciate all the work and effort that goes in. Okay, so if there's nothing else, all those in favour? And that's carried. This takes us now to item twelve, which is the major projects overview report. Would someone like to move that officer's recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The recommendation is that council receives and accepts the April, two thousand and twenty-two major projects overview report as presented.
I should second that.
Thank you, councillor Tully, and thank you, councillor Coghlan. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just the overview, the Gallipoli Park pump track is complete, and it was officially opened, what, two weeks ago, which was great. And yeah, I really commend the team on that project. It really is, you know, an excellent project that's been completed here. And I think everyone at the town and the constituents are very, very happy with the end result. The Buchanan Park toilet block footing has been poured, and the blocks have started to manufacture the site. Installation to begin after the show. Skate park is completed. Contract for the construction of the basketball court at Lions Park has been awarded, and the contractor will start construction in May twenty-two. And council has been successful in receiving the grant for preparing the Australian Communities Programme, which includes the Guardian Incident Management System and an audit into the inspection of regional road drainage assets.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Is there any other comments on this one?
I'd just like to reiterate what councillor Tully said about all the major projects. But one in particular, I'm getting nothing in the community from... Feedback from community members getting nothing but praise for the work that's been done at the skate park. So Renee, if you could pass on, like, we'd like to pass on our thanks to you and your team. It has been really, really well received in the community, so great work done.
Couldn't agree more. It's already hit, and we sort of haven't even finished yet. So it's real credit to staff, and a lot of effort has gone in, so thank you so much.
Yeah, through the chair, that skate park has really opened up the usage for that site, more people using it. And it just highlights the work that's going on, ongoing to as well, like the redevelopment or refurbishment of the family fun park. I know a lot of people in the community are very anxious for that work to be done. But things take time as far as projects go with procurement and getting people to do the work. The Gallipoli Park pump track is just inundated with people every weekend and through the weeks after school too as well. So they're two great community projects that the Mount Isa City Council has gotten off the ground and that are very well received by the community.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. And I'm guessing there are a lot of council staff that are glad that they don't have to jump into that skate bowl and pull out all the rubbish and try and get tollies out. And also, I'm sure, even if the... I couldn't imagine getting out of there, never mind someone in work boots. So, yeah, I'm sure it's a win-win for everyone. All right, so if there's no more comments, all those in favour? Councillor Coghlan?
McCray.
No, that's all right. And that's carried. We've got nil for general business, so...
Twelve point two.
Oh, did I miss one? Sorry. Twelve point two, which is Works and Operations Overview Report. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The recommendation is that council receives and accepts the April, two thousand and twenty-two Works and Operations Overview Report.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Thank you. Just an overview, the... During March and April, the council delivered the ANZAC Day events in the CBD cemetery in Camweal, continued with the delivery of capital works projects, Gallipoli Park track that's... We spoke about earlier. Installed barbecues and shelters and seating at Selwyn Park. The rural crew following rain in January and February. Council was approved to activate under the Disaster Recovery Funding Agreement, and they've undertaken emergency works. The batch plants, both external and internal sales are increasing, with the total output from March and April being excess of eighteen hundred cubic metres of concrete. The concrete quality is being maintained at a high standard, and I think that probably has a lot to do with the installation of those polywater tanks, because they can use fresh water now. And the workshop and fleet services, some key equipment scheduled to arrive in May, which is four light vehicles, a roller, two light trucks, and a line marking machine.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other comments on this one?
I'd like to, through the chair, ask the director. The easements and any other land that's owned, that is looked after by state, I don't think they're doing their job. Have we been writing to them, or can we action this a little bit harder?
Through the chair, thank you, councillor Coghlan. Yes, we have notified the department. We are in communication with them. We're trying to improve their reaction time to that. We are also proposing to them whether or not we have an agreement with them to maintain it.
it ourselves so that there's no cause or issues with the community. So that's something we're undertaking with them.
Just through the Chair, if they put it back on us, they're definitely going to pay us.
This is something we're going to negotiate with them, councillor Coglan.
Director Renee Wallace, so what happens at the moment then if we haven't got that sort of locked in? So I was under the impression that we actually did maintain it and built them.
No, Madam Mayor, currently at the moment, we notify the department and they organise contractors to complete the works.
Okay, well, that's a great initiative then. I think it would be something council could do for them and probably a lot cheaper.
No, definitely not a lot cheaper.
Through Madam Mayor.
Sorry, what?
We don't have enough staff.
Yep. We basically...
Sorry, councillor, I didn't hear.
We can't keep up with what, our parks, gardens, median strips, footpaths as it is with the crew that we have. State government have dropped the bundle on this over years, I feel. They haven't done anything and they're not responding in a good enough time now. So I believe if they aren't reacting to what we're doing, we need to probably go a little bit higher. Because this issue hasn't just come up with this council. I know it's come up with last council and it's come up with the council before. So the state government are dropping the bundle on this one.
And I'm not suggesting we do it for free.
Well, I'm suggesting we just can't do it at all because we just haven't got the staff. Because when you look at how many easements, drainages and all that that need to be done, we just, yeah, it's impossible.
If we negotiate a contract going forward and we bring in the income stream, that might allow us to get more staff. That's what I'm suggesting. All right. Any more comments?
No, I think...
All right, all those in favour? Councillor Coglan?
Oh, sorry, again.
That's all right.
Forgetting my hand.
All right, and that's carried.
Sorry.
No, no, all good. So that brings us now into general business, which is nil. So I'm going to adjourn now. The time is 10:12 AM and then when we come back in, we'll come back into closed business. So thank you for everyone who's participated in public participation and look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Good morning everyone, so would someone like to move the motion that council considers the following confidential reports in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section 254 J of the Local Government Regulation 2012. 14.1 the audit report on on-site operational purpose exemption 190031O S O P for Mayor and City Council. 11.2 certified agreement progress report and 14.3 a council request for a general business item. Can I get someone to move that motion?
Move.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, can I get someone to second that motion?
Seconded Coghlan.
Thank you, all those in favour? Alright, the meeting is now 10:20. Good morning everyone, so would someone like to move the motion that council considers the following confidential reports in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section 254 J of the Local Government Regulation 2012.
Motion, that council moves out of closed council into open council.
So moved Coghlan.
Second Barwick.
Thank you councillor Coghlan, thank you councillor Barwick, all those in favour. And that's carried. That now takes us to item 14.1, which is the audit report on on-site operational purpose exemption. 190031O SOP for Mount Iver City Council. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, madam mayor, that council receives and accepts the results of an order report on on-site operational purpose exemption. 190031O SOP for the Mount Iver City Council as presented.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune, all those in favour. And that's carried. That takes us now to item 14.2, which is a certified agreement progress report. Can I get someone to move that motion?
I'll move the recommendation that council receives and accepts the progress report on the status of the current certified agreement negotiations.
Thank you councillor Coghlan, seconded for that motion?
Second Barwick.
Thank you councillor Barwick. And that takes us to item 14...
Vote, you've got a vote.
Sorry, I jumped, all those in favour. And that's carried, sorry, am I finished? That takes us to item 14.3, we'll just wait for a couple of people to leave their room. And that was councillor request for a general business item, and I will hand you over to councillor Fortune.
The recommendation there is that council discuss the item of general business as per request by councillor George Fortune on Thursday 28th of April 2022, pursuant to section 6.3.2 of council standing orders policy. And that Mount Iver City Council approve the CEO $3,300 GST inclusive for the preparation and service of a concerns notice as is required by section 12b of the Defamation Act 2005 in relation to the CEO's application for legal assistance.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded Coghlan.
And all those in favour? And can I just have my own vote recorded as against? Can we bring back in? And that actually concludes the ordinary meeting for today. So thanks everybody and for those who've tuned in at home. And the time is now 11.50.